Okay.
Mr. Lopez is joining us.
She has a conflict this morning.
Oh, she does. Okay. All right. Well, with that, it is a few minutes after ten. So good morning, everybody. Welcome to the staff meeting of today. Yes, Tom, when we got on the agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Three items for discussion this morning. First is the legislative platform discussion. This is coming to you tomorrow for a finalization of a vote to move forward with the platform. So it's our last chance to discuss that before the meeting tomorrow. Similarly, tomorrow, coming back is a bid board item that was deferred back in November in concern with federal lobbyist employment. A chance to discuss that, and then Joe will bring that back as an open meeting. New business item tomorrow on a meeting. And then finally, the M A B C D director here is here with his electrical chief. There's some interesting issues in the code regarding elevator inspections. I don't know. As you go around the city and you look at the elevators, there's always a signature there on who inspected. Almost 100% of them are Chris Nordic. He's the only guy in the county doing that right now. And Chris and 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 wants to talk to you about the issues there. Just an information one way kind of pieces of information, no decisions today on how we're going to move forward with these types of inspections. So we'll do that last. So platform first, Tanya, you want to start us off or?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just before you, you have the latest draft of the legislative platform. I will tell you, last time we had a discussion on this, I went back and I added the zoo item, which was the license plate. And I will tell you that we have had some good progress on the license plate. Representative Landwear and Senator Blasey are going to lead the charge on that particular bill. And it is in the reviser's office right now. So we've got some good progress on that particular item going into the legislative, going into, help me out here. I'm having trouble with my words, going into the.
What was the first person you just mentioned? Senator Blasey, who was the first one though?
Representative Landwear.
Landwear, okay. Did you have a question, Commissioner, to ask?
No, I just want to thank Tanya for working this. This is a high priority for the zoo. They've been talking about it for some time. They've got the license plate designed. Everything is ready to go. We just need approval from the legislature to move forward.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we do have some progress and we'll get that passed this session. So. Okay, so as far as this goes, I think it's ready to go. What I will do is I may lean on the manager and Commissioner Howell because I know that there was a discussion last week that happened with Speaker Dan Hawkins. And so the manager did send out some of those talking points on that discussion. And so I may just kind of pass it over to you, Commissioner Howell, if you can speak on that.
So we did that. We were able to sit down with Speaker Hawkins and appreciate his time. Unfortunately, Senator Masterson was not able to participate at that particular meeting, but we did. We did not have as much time as we felt like we needed. We had kind of an abbreviated opportunity. So we did. We did sit down and talk about it. And he did encourage us to simplify this a little bit. Some of the things we had on there. He did not believe we needed it on there because it was essentially taken care of. So this is actually a shorter list than we had before. And then he also referenced some of the points of contact we might want to talk to specifically about some of the items on this list that we have points of contact we need to work with directly. But with that, I just want to share against the manager, you were there as well. What were your comments?
I agree with Commissioner Howell. The points of contact, for example, Representative Owens for juvenile justice. We know who the experts are there, and he corroborated that information. He did bring up on bullet number one under Calm Care that the funding for nine eight eight is never in dispute. He doesn't know why that's on an agenda because it's going to be perpetually appropriated. So it's something for the commission to consider to lean that down. And then he saw the second bullet as a nonstarter, that it is a representation to go that to that level of percentage is basically Medicaid expansion. And he sees that politically as a nonstarter. So he questioned that bullet as well. The rest of this, he was generally supportive of. And as Commissioner House said, you know, pointed us to directions of points of contact to to continue that. So.
I actually misspoke. I thought this was actually the updated. This is exactly what we had before. It is what we showed Dan Hawkins and again, I don't have my note. I don't have your notes from that meeting.
Yeah, actually, do we have?
I didn't bring my.
Tanya has given me the email that I sent you all. And I'll just, if it's okay, I'll just read them real quick. There's six bullets.
Okay.
Bullet one, under Calm Care, he indicated the nine eight eight line will be perpetually funded and recommended taking this off our agenda. And I put a note there. This is the commission's agenda, and Jason will validate this. This is, we get input, but at the end of the day, you own this agenda. So whatever this body says is what's going to be presented as our agenda. Bullet number two, as I mentioned, was a nonstarter. This level of funding is clearly represents Medicaid expansion. He also indicated that people at the 100% poverty line have access to help if they simply apply. Bullets three and four, under Calm Care, he needed more information as he doesn't have a grasp on those issues, but he recommended working with Representative Will Carpenter regarding those two issues. That's kind of Representative Carpenter in the wheelhouse. Regarding policy on broadband access support, he felt that the state had extensively funded that and is wondering why that's on the platform. And then regarding the human resource component of capers three to capers two, he is supportive of that. But advises that Senator Masterson, we will need to talk with him. He seemed to be, the Senate side seemed to be nonsupportive. So we focus our work toward the Senate on that. And then he did share on regarding the property tax component that he as a speaker will recommend a two mil reduction from the state's 21.5 mil rate. And he hopes that our county would support him on that. So that was my takeaways from. And I may have chairman and vice chair, you were there also, if I may have missed something. So.
I don't recall. Again, I left my notes on the desk up out here. So, okay. The C D D O, was there some stuff in there that we're supposed to refer? Is that Senator, is that Owens? Do you recall?
No, that was Will Carpenter. Senator Representative Owens, Stephen Owens, was the issue of juvenile correction.
Okay.
That whole bit is there.
Okay.
Speaker didn't have as much information about that, but he knows that Representative Owens does. We might want to reach out to him and see if we can clean this up just a little bit so that the I guess the point of this is that he feels like this, I think, if I was to put words in his mouth, this is a bit wordy. If we would understand what Representative Owens is supportive of, if we can agree with him on some things, that's what this list should show, if you will. If there's things on this list that he was absolutely opposed to, we already know it's going to just, it's not going to go anywhere. So by talking to Will Carpenter on that C D D O stuff and talking to Representative Owens on the juvenile justice stuff, he might be able to clean this up some way. I'm not reached out to those personally, but we can do that.
We can try to do that before tomorrow. Where are we at on bullet one and two under Conquer? What's the commission's well on?
I think, based on what we talked about, I think you take out, we eliminate one and two. The first two bullets.
Totally agree.
Leave three and four. Little, again, like you said, a little wordy.
I agree.
But maybe it was a category, maybe we move Calm Care as a category down a little bit, I think, corrections and there's other things that.
My recollection on bullets three and four under Conquer is he, I think he needed more. I don't know that he was so much averse that is he needed more information, more analysis. And so we could maybe work with that.
David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. We all read the newspaper earlier. Fact that Via Christie is shutting down some of their interventions. And so I had an opportunity yesterday to talk to Robin Chadwick about it a little bit to ask what impact that would have on Segway County, and it will have an impact on Segway County. It means that a lot of these folks are going to have to go over to Calm Care. And we're going to pick up the workload on that. So knowing that this is going to come before us today to talk about, I asked Tom to get ahold of Via Christie this morning and see exactly what their stance is and what we can do to help them because of the impact that it's going to have on Segway County. And Tom did get an email back from Via Christie and the fact that they shut that down, I don't know that we're going to be able to work that or help them out. But he did state, and I'll read it directly, and this is from Bruce Whittle with Via Christie. Where we could use the county's support is for the legislature to add supplemental funding of $15 million annually to distribute to those providers offering inpatient behavioral health services to uninsured patients. So that may be something under, I don't know if it really fits under Calm Care, but it impacts Calm Care.
And Joan, Joan is zoomed in, and she has a pretty comprehensive impact statement of what this could or could not mean for the county. So whenever you're ready for Joan to talk.
Go ahead. Hi, Joan.
You're muted, Joan.
So I think, you know, the reality is, is we're talking about the psychiatric observation unit. So it's rare for Calm Care to refer directly to the observation unit. If we refer, we're referring to the emergency department for an inpatient bed. So I think the bigger community impact is going to be, are they going to hang on to their inpatient beds? I think we can absorb, we've got capacity in our observation unit and our crisis stabilization unit at this point to meet some of that expectation from Via Christie for their P O U. But again, my, my concern comes to the point of what are they going to do with those inpatient beds? Because we don't know if their plan is to narrow that scope down and not do as much. And if we do, we have a community crisis on our hand because there's no way we can hold those individuals because we don't provide that level of support.
Jane, Joan, I understand that part of it, but I guess the second part of Bruce put in his email that I just read a few minutes ago. Is that something that will help us if we ask the state to add additional 15 million to other providers?
I'm sorry, were you asking me, Commissioner?
Yeah, David has a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I, are you asking if we should support that, that agenda item? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. Did you hear what I read from Bruce Witt on what his request is?
To support $15 million for providers of inpatient services? Is that what you said? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I, I mean, inpatient beds are really important. I get, I get worried, you know, because then you're starting to support a lot of for-profit entities. But at the same time, I don't know how we would survive in our community because we're a regional center for those inpatient beds. So it's not only impacting us, it's impacting the communities around us. So we need them. I don't know what funding level is necessary. I don't have an understanding of the the financial implications of what that 15 million does.
Hey, listening to this, if we had a bullet that said support 15 million for mental crisis inpatient beds, is that one sentence that?
Well, it's fine with me if it's, I think that it will help Segway County. That's where I come from.
Well, I would say that there is a direct relationship to Via Christie's capacity at St. Joe of doing this service to impact and said, can I have 101 beds? So just the P O U, these people are not going to be in the emergency room waiting the closure of those 12 beds. They have 101 beds at St. Joe. They don't do this. And there is rumors that, you know, $17 million of uncompensated care that they're absorbing. This community is asking a for-profit organization to absorb $17 million of uncompensated care a year, and they're doing it as a community benefit. So I think that drawing the connection that it has impact for Segway County is an easy one in my mind to say, if they're not doing this, we don't have 101 beds, inpatient beds in this community at this point in time. So I think we got to advocate for our community partners that are going to bat. I would be supportive of it. There is rumor, and there is legitimate conversation that they are going to diminish that bed count, that financially it does not make sense. If they do that, that's going to be a windfall to this community.
I think, and I think the other piece, you know, along with that Commissioner Beatty is, you know, they're already having workforce shortages. They're really anxious about the state hospital coming in where it's heavily nursing staffed and drawing from their current resources. So will they even be able to sustain those 101 beds even if they wanted to?
If it's what Segway County, I was asking for something for the other providers. I'm for that. I don't know why we wouldn't want to add that to our legislative agenda.
We'll, we'll add that into a draft, get that back to you in base, you can see it before tomorrow.
Do you want to just replace that last bullet, provide funding for detox and combine it into a support 15 million?
Joan, that's apples and oranges, right? I mean, that's the detox beds are something different than what we're talking, I would.
Yeah.
And we need the detox bed too.
Okay. And again, what, what makes is different is this doesn't say how much funding is say, what, what's the shortage of? Again, you have to be specific with these folks. You don't, they're asking exactly what you're asking for. They have no idea. Well, you guys say provide funding, what are we actually asking for?
Is that something we removed when we were cleaning this? Or Joan, do you have an idea on that as far as amount of funding for the detox beds?
Well, years and years ago, it was 1.5. So you can imagine it's escalated from there. I would venture 2.2.
I'd suggest that edit and.
Just provide 2 million funding, but 2 million in between provide and funding.
I'm not sure you even need the word funding at that point, but yes, insert the word 2, 2 million dollars into that sentence. That would be the right thing to do. If you wanted to add, I agree with the Commissioner Beatty. I think this 15 million for uncompensated care would be a loss to the community if they decided not to do this at all. It is unreasonable, I think, for them to just do this for free, just absorb that cost. So, yeah, I consider this a public-private partnership. If the state wants to have that service provided through this resources willing to do it as long as they get paid, I think that's reasonable. But I think we need to back out of it. Us advocating for them is reasonable, but I don't want to, you know, if the state chooses not to fund this, I don't know that this is a county issue directly. Have to be careful.
I agree that we probably ought to have the amount of funding we need for the detox. So I had 2.2 million in that.
Yeah, I'm looking at numbers right now from SAC that sent me a Wichita detox budget, and it's just shy of 2 million, and that was a few months ago. So I think 2.2 million is an accurate number based on their budget.
Okay. To add that. Sounds like we're in agreement.
Any other changes?
Oh, that section.
You got bullet threes there, bullet four, change funding to 2 million, and then the fifth bullet, which is accidentally three bullets, is support 15 million.
Okay, we can change that. We just, as we roll down to C D D O now, I'm trying to remember Representative Hawkins, the speaker's comments on that. I don't know that he recommended keeping or not. He recommended that as a hugely, it's an old problem that continues to perpetuate, and it's going to be a heavy lift. I think those are the types of words you use. So I think we allow it to remain.
It's an old problem, but it keeps getting worse.
Yeah.
They've got to solve it.
Well, we can leave them on there. That just, as Commissioner Howell, each bullet starts out with support interhab on all four of them.
You know, I don't know what else is on interhab's legislative platform, but is it, is it just these four things or are there other things on their platform?
My understanding is there are other things on this platform. We are specifically calling these items out as our support.
Okay.
The county's support of the state association request.
I think we can clean that up and take out the repetitive words and just make one support interhab and then bullet, bullet under that, we can clean that up and make that look a little better.
I mean, there's even explanations that say, for example, says there are currently 990 individuals on the waiting list. That's not a platform statement. That's just data behind the scenes. I don't think we need to actually put down a rationale for why it's on this list on the platform itself. That doesn't need to be there. I think it's going to get cleaned up quite a bit. Right. You know, just one more thing about this, this longer platform, is that our intention, this is for Jessica and Jason. Are we going to hand this out to legislators?
We historically have. I, I agree with you, though, Vice Chair. I think what we're trying to give our lobbyists is a roadmap on what to argue on our behalf, and that's what this document needs to me. I don't know that we necessarily have to hand this out.
I hate to wordsmith this thing to death, but if we plan on handing this out to everybody, that's what you're going to get. I want to, I want to be careful to make it as succinct and as clear as possible if we're going to hand it out to everybody. If this is just communication to our lobbyist team, I don't know that I mind it the way it is necessarily. But I'm hoping at the end of the day, we can get this down to two or three, four things that can be simply, you know, on a very, very small thing you hand out in the elevator and people keep on their nightstand at night, and then they look at it and it sits on their desk and, you know, hand it out same legislator 50 times during the session. To me, that's they become more effective. But if you hand out this paint long list of stuff, you're not going to do that.
We have three forms that we hand out. We have the business card, we have the palm card, and then we have this. So I think what they typically will do is hand out a business card or the palm card, which is a condensed version. And then this is the further detail if they want, if they want that information.
So are we going to have those discussions about what belongs on those things at some point? Or is this, this is the long list?
This is the long list. The palm card is a more condensed, and then the business card is just the QR code.
I think on the business card, you could have a QR code on one side and have three things listed on the front side. But anyway, I, I think what makes sense is let's get the long list done for the commission satisfaction. We'll take this to Jason, Jessica this afternoon to make sure from a wordsmithing perspective, it's palatable to them. And then bring that back for you tomorrow to, to vote on. I think that Jason would give us guidance on. And then the logistics of what goes where, we can work that out between now and. I know the day is getting short, but if we can send that out at the end of the day today, whatever, when it gets done, hoping to be get work done today, not tomorrow morning. Might be nice to have that at overnight so we can come in the morning, tomorrow morning, and have had a head chance to review that before the meeting.
Do the best we can.
All right. What else we got?
Anything else on the, on any of the rest of this? I don't know if we got any.
You're taking broadband out.
If that's the commission's.
I think we agree. Broadband out. Owens, I don't know. Can anybody talk to Owens before today, when's that?
The biggest issue with broadband in Segway County is the maps that they're using to decide where to put things are still not accurate. And so what the state has asked us to do is everybody that go look at the maps and identify whether or not that it meets your needs in your, where you live. Well, what they're doing is they're passing the buck from the state down to the citizens that need it. And the citizens aren't I don't think the citizens are equipped to go onto their website and start answering all these questions about speed and so forth. I think it's a state responsibility, and that's what kind of perturbs me about this issue is that the state kind of dumps it on the citizens to try and figure out how to get broadband. They might fund it like crazy, but if the citizens aren't getting this, this service, and I guarantee you out in the rural areas, we're not getting the service.
But I, I agree with you, Commissioner. It's not so much a funding issue as a marketing and communications. And I know either Nicole or Mike Elpers took us through that example at one point in a meeting, and maybe that's something we can work with Jay directly on to try to get a more robust marketing component to that.
Yeah, it's kind of a task more than a
Yeah.
policy.
Do that?
Seems to me that it's just. I think what, if you're asking the state to do it, we'd be asking the state to create a department to contact citizens and help them fill out forms.
Basically, which I think they're, they're putting the onus on the wrong people. Onus needs to be on the state in order to do their job to figure out where the broadband is instead of saying, well, we've got all this money, you just tell us where you need to have it. And if it's not there, let us know. That, that's not the way to do it. That's not what the state ought to be doing.
Well, according to Mr. Hawkins, he feels that they're funding it really good. So if you want to, if you want to write something up, we can try it.
Funding is good. What I doubt is it's publicly bidding broadband where it needs to be because they're telling the citizens, well, if you don't like it, they'll have these forums, let's go.
Let us try to communicate with Jade on that.
Okay.
Let's commission them.
All right. If they feel like it's important to leave it in, leave it in.
I think as it's written, it needs to come out because it's specific towards funding. We all agree that's not the issue here. So let's see if there's some type of communications piece that we, yeah. We'll take it out as is and see if there needs to be replacement language to get to where Commissioner Dennis wants to go.
Okay. Juvenile stuff, we did talk about that. But it from juvenile corrections on with us this morning. This good as is, do we feel? Rusty. It's only two, it's only two bullets, which is nice.
What I heard from Commissioner House, we probably need to touch base with.
I would like to talk to Stephen Owens today. I'll do it. I'll reach out and send out an email to you, Rusty, if that's okay. And I do know that he has a list of things he wants to get done. He's not satisfied with what we got done last year. We did get some stuff done. We made some movement, but it wasn't enough. So and I'd like to align our, our platform a little bit with, with his own ideas. I think he's moving us in the right direction. I probably want more than he probably can get done, but let's just get the pare it down to what we can accomplish this year. And I think by talking to him, I can get this cleaned up a little bit.
Well, the good, I don't know if it's, it's pretty direct.
That we will.
I mean, it does say S B two 28, K S A. I mean, it is, they are specific on the adjustment you need. So, all right, if you can get with him, that'd be great. Okay. Okay. Move on.
Yes. Stay or go? Good. My next item, Chairman, I was going to say, Senate, Senate Bill 13 discussion, he had a great big sigh and he saw that on our list. I don't even know what that means, but I don't think you want to talk about it. So. I know.
Yeah.
It belongs on the list. I was not sure how much, but a pile more wasted in there because.
If we feel what's important to us here, I think it's okay to keep it on the list. And I mean, I would agree with Commissioner House, likely not going anywhere. But if we feel that this is something that's important to our constituents and advocating for a change, I think is reasonable.
You almost just leave the first sentence by itself.
I think that's the one that matters the most because honestly, this commission will get dinged through the revenue neutral rate process because of the 1.5 mils for W S U every time. Otherwise, you're going to be expected to eat that increase on the other side of the budget. And so if there is anything that actually matters, I mean, truly matters. And it will affect everyone. I think it's one to this top bullet where mill levies are set by statute. And there needs to be some give for that. So I do think that one is worth a little bit of political capital, though it's not necessarily a hill to die on.
So as you're saying, in that bullet, there's one, two, and three. Are you?
I think number one is the one to fight for. I think the others would be nine. I think number one is is the one to fight for. I think the others would be nice.
First sentence plus combined it into that.
Right? Just leave number one, remove number one and.
See, yeah.
Take out two and three for.
And I would not advocate this for this necessarily, but if they really don't want to make that adjustment. But I think our response is to freeze their dollars.
Likely.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't know that legally we can.
Okay, well, just one way or the other, this needs to be settled. One way or the other.
I agree. It would be nice.
Okay. We'll we'll rewrite that and I would have run, I'd like to run that one by Jason one more time. My my memory is the same as Commissioner House. We had this sigh, but really no. Like he didn't. Want to deal with it. So let's get an interpretation of what that meant from Jason and we'll go from there.
Okay. Um. So DUI something that we can continue to just work through? We need to have it on here?
Well, it's come from the DA or sheriff.
It's came out of the mental health substance abuse coalition meeting. And it's an issue where the. People are not going through the correction that they need in order to be able to continue to drive after having a number of DUIs. And. I think I understood it by it was kind of the way that they changed the the law recently and. Deleted some of the requirements for them to go back and and have some recovery.
And so you. We should have it on there then still, you think? Or working through it?
Also, I want to support the mental health coalition, the police coalition, why? They just need to reinstate what they deleted by accident about them, but I guess by accident. Uh, that you that made it so that they didn't have to go back and take all of the recovery. When you add multiple DUIs, we certainly don't want people driving on the road with multiple DUIs and are not recovered.
Okay, this is statewide issues. I mean, can you reword it to say reinsert language that was deleted last year or whatever? Easier?
It says support reinstating. Finally.
Right? Me, that one sounds like we're carrying the water for. For the whole state, not just us, but that's all right.
Not the first time. Okay. Anything else?
Would that have been on? You know, was that on?
State, yeah, county association?
Just curious.
But the county one doesn't. And association, county has a lot of stuff.
Well, I know. I just wondered if they, I just wonder if it even had visibility at the county. It's a state association. That's my. That was really my question. All right, we move on. Papers three for sure. That's a, that's a hot one, looks like. And I know that our friends in Johnson County have that high on their list. To support as well. It gets the. Banana peel been peeled and it's exposed and so. Okay.
I agree with the rest of the sheet, actually. The rest, the rest of this page, I think is good, first one.
Yep.
I I have some concerns about the two, my public works, not that I don't disagree with what they're saying here. But those are really long paragraphs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get that down to about a sentence or so for each one of those.
Lynn, can you work with Tony?
I would say that to Speaker Hawkins, he's very happy to see the property tax piece on there. Uh, he felt like that our support for the state's. Deduction of two mils was very important. However. He did say after the meeting, they they get along with this as an absolute intent to. Elite LAVTR city county revenue sharing programs out of the statutes. So. The two mils is is a trade off for those two ideas. My question is, two mils may not be permanent. They said. Year by year appropriation. I don't know how that, I don't know. I'm not sure. Again, I agree with. At least initially, this is a good thing, but I don't know down the road.
Do you think future legislators will? Increase property tax on people?
What's it?
If we can get it through. I I don't see. The state legislature ever saying, oh, well, we named the state, we're gonna raise the property tax.
But Commissioner House pointing fingers across for the future. Right?
I do. Anyway, I think it's, I think to the top of the sheet, uh, down through leaving the bottom of the sheet, I agree with some back pages of this as well. Good page. It just seems to be cleaned up some.
Thanks to staff for all the work on that.
Yep, not a work in progress. Thank you. Chairman, I have one more thing. Uh. Commissioner Beatty and I actually attended the chamber forum the other day on homelessness. Um, you were gonna be there. Thank you for allowing us to be there as well. We actually, we had two commissioners who couldn't get the three because of the. But one thing that came up during that meeting, I was reminded, I kind of forgot about it, but I was reminded because the city brought it up at that meeting. Was this issue where this, the uh, the county in the past has exempted ourselves from state requirements on. I think it was health inspections for schools. I don't know exactly how that worked out, but. Because of the COVID policies that were passed in twenty 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 one and two. We lost our exemption option. And consequently, now we had to hire some people. Uh, through the health department and uh, we are now inspecting schools when they, when they, going back for decades. We were exempted from having to do that because we chartered out of that exemption. We don't have that option anymore because they took that charter option out, our ability to charter out of that. Requirement. They took that away from us that. With that law, I don't think the state legislators realized that was going to happen. And I've talked to them about this. They were surprised by that that was a consequence of this uh. Otherwise, pretty good law. But they didn't like the fact that we're creating, if you will, a requirement for us to inspect schools. And I would tell you, in Kansas. Homeschools are considered private schools. They're inspecting public schools and private schools and technically they're not. Doing homeschools, but you could almost argue that they would have. Um, so this is obviously a very awkward law. And the city has raised this issue that they feel like this is something we need to revisit. And I would agree with them. So. Uh, I would just say that if it's on the platform right now, I think it is an issue. I don't know. You can speak to that a little bit.
Certainly, Commissioner Howell, um, there, you're correct in in terms of the procedure of what happened was a special legislative session in twenty twenty. Uh, the state legislature essentially nullified the ability for counties to charter out of some of the public health statutes, including uh, the charter. The the statute that Cedric County had chartered out of a couple of times before. Uh, where that sentence in the statute requiring those school inspections uh, was removed. And so. Um, you know, I I know for that question would come up when Cedric County Health Department staff, you know, five, ten years ago would be the. Continuing education. Other counties would be like, why aren't you doing that? Well, we had chartered out of that. As a consequence of that being nullified. Um, that app, that statute, that portion of the statute now applies to Cedric County again. Um, it'd be up to the will of the commission. If you wanted to add that in the platform, we could identify the specific statute and sentence in it pretty succinctly, I think, if that's the will.
I feel pretty strongly about this. And again, just to make a point here, there is actually no teeth in this. If you find. That there is a bare dirt on the playground and that's a finding of the health inspection. Because there's dust that might be on the playground. Uh, they would cite that or if the drinking fountain has uh, any dirt in the drinking fountain. Uh, not, not that they would be consumed, but the fact that it's there or that they found the bathroom. Before it's been cleaned for the uh, in that moment of the day. And the inspection is the bathroom wasn't as clean as they would like. These are findings. These findings are are reported. Uh, we create a record for our 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 own staff. As well as provide a copy of that inspection to the school. But there's no follow up. There's no fines. There's no, there's no requirements. It's simply. Almost a courtesy to them. And my opinion is. I don't see the point. Um. We've gone without these types of inspections. They, these, these folks know. Their facilities better than we do. It's up to parents and staff, I think, to take care of these problems. This is not creating, if you will. Uh, good government that says that we're making sure this is health and safety for these students that. It could be a very temporary situation where. We happen to show up at a certain time and and found the bathroom dirty, uh, wasn't cleaned up yet for the day. So I don't, I just find this to be really bad law. And I think we, when I mentioned this to some legislators, they were appalled. They could not believe that this happened. It's a consequence, frankly, of, I think, unintended consequences of what they, what otherwise was a pretty good law. We actually slipped, something has slipped by them, so to speak. So if we address this, I have no doubt they would want to fix this. We need to get it in front of it. So I I think it does belong on our platform.
I'm looking at the platform and under policy between DUIs and human resources, anybody have a problem if we put a health department issue in there and write this up? Add it to the platform.
Saves money too.
Do that and get that back to the section.
So there's a chance if we don't have it all perfectly refined by tomorrow's meeting, we may have to defer it. Again.
And there, I don't think there's. A sign, because the city's not rolling our platform till after Thursday. We'll have a meeting on January third to get another bite out of it.
Right. But let's hope that maybe we can, but if we, if we can. Okay. All right.
With that in mind, since we have some meetings with legislators between now and session beginning. I I don't mind, if you will, providing some draft copy. To our legislators that we have opportunity to meet with them and say, there's our platform as of the moment. We're going to adopt it probably in January as a draft. Let them, if you will, see it. I I don't want to not go to print with something. Uh, in a limited fashion. So we have something to hand out to them in a draft fashion.
I, if we do not adopt the platform in its final form tomorrow, could you make that motion from the bench tomorrow that we send out the draft? I'd like to guys to vote on that.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
Anything else?
Good, good.
Okay, then the other thing that's reappearing on the. Uh, meeting tomorrow, Joe is going to have a new business item on the uh, the federal lobbyist. And so a chance to discuss that or change course on that or what we want to do.
Okay, anybody got anything on that?
No, I. I still do not support the federal lobbyists. People even against it if they want to have something on our agenda to approve. But I. It's a whole lot of money. We're having two different. Organizations, the city Wichita and the county paying the same amount of money to one person to do the same job. Or taxpayers being double taxed in order to have a lobbyist in DC. And I haven't seen him accomplish a thing. So I'll say all that and maybe more tomorrow. Thank you.
Right, next time.
All right, Chris, you are up then to educate us on elevators.
Right, good morning, Chairman Commissioners. Thank you for taking some time to hear us today. Oh, as I said, that didn't look right. Thank you, Nicole. Um, uh, appreciate that. So to discuss our elevator safety program. Uh, as it stands now, a little bit of background. Um, you may remember that this began in twenty twenty one. Uh, proposed this House Bill twenty seven sixty five, kind of interesting how it went down because that bill, if I recall correctly or understood correctly, didn't really make it out of committee in time. But they ended up tacking all of the tenants uh, of that into a boiler. Act and a boiler bill that was then uh, put through. And established the program. And nonetheless, we were involved in. The inception of the bill. Uh, when it was written, we got involved uh, fairly early on. Uh, Justin Wagner, uh. A pen to the language that they ended up using to uh, discuss how local jurisdictions would be handled. So we didn't, didn't have any particular issues with that. It was passed uh, so Article eighteen. Was added as a result to KSA forty four. So this specifically is Article eighteen zero one through eighteen forty four. If anyone's wanting to research that. Became effective uh, July first of last year. And basically what this did is create a statewide elevator program, which included all of the licensing of contractors and technicians, mechanics. Uh, as well as permitting and inspections. Uh, it is off, it is through that act administered by the Office of the State Fire Marshal. The inspections are specifically done by private industry civilian inspectors. Uh, the fire marshal administers the program, so they license the inspectors as well as the contractors. Uh, who do the work and then just report that back to uh, the state fire marshal. Uh, you'll see as we go through this, that's an an important piece because we're allowed to do that as well. And are currently actually doing that with the majority of our elevators inspections right now so that we don't get any further behind in the program. Uh, and and then as stated, uh, Justin uh, was. Justin's language was included, uh, allowing a an exemption for local jurisdictions that meet or exceed requirements set forth by the state fire marshal. And we do believe and did all along that regardless of what we did with our program, that was important language to have in the law. Uh, allowing jurisdictions to do that. As it so happened, um, and we knew all along that our plan was to retain our program. We were the only ones in the state who did so. Uh, everyone else went ahead and turned it over to the, to the fire marshal. So uh, they had a little more official process in which they registered and registered through conveyances. We met uh, online a few times with the fire marshal. They were. They were concerned throughout this process that the lack of our revenue would make it very hard for the program to work, but legislature. Uh, went ahead and pushed them forward, said it would be funded. So uh, we were registered uh, there in quotes in that uh, they registered that we would be maintaining our own program and we still provided them a list of our conveyances. Uh, that they have on file. Uh, this was, this included that we uh, had you all uh, pass a joint resolution uh, with the city council to state that this was our intent. Uh, and allow us to include that in our correspondence with the fire marshal. So a little bit of a break uh, between that bullet and the next in that we knew that this would create an additional privatized industry in the area. We underestimated how robust that industry would be and how much that has become. So uh, as a result of that, we have found ourselves recently unable to retain or hire elevator inspectors. Uh, and our inspection is thus falling behind. So uh, our current status is kind of, I guess I'll bleed from current status uh, included in kind of our options here. We do have uh, three positions. Uh, within that. And then we've all, and so that's specific elevator inspector positions. And then Mr. Nordic, who is here with us today, as Tom pointed out. Um, is the chief and helps with those inspections when necessary. So if if we look at the conveyances, the inspections, the numbers that we have right now to include some of the new buildings that have been uh, built in our jurisdiction. And we, we run our inspection numbers. If anything, it tells us we need to add another inspector. Uh, and and that would, and still would require Mr. Nordic to take some of the inspections each year to offset that and offset any inspector vacation, et cetera. We would still be paying some overtime uh, as part of the program. Um, as it stands now, uh, we have two vacancies. Uh, we had one inspector leave and actually start his own company doing inspections in May. We have not received an applicant for that position since. It's been, oh, well, today will be the hundred and eighty sixth day that it's been open. Uh, and then uh, recently we lost uh, our next most qualified elevator inspector. And have uh, in the, has he been gone a month yet? Uh, so approximately a month now. And in that time, we have still received no additional interest. Uh, in our position from, from anyone in the interest industry. And that includes with Chris and his staff. As aggressively as we dare, um. Uh, obviously advertising with with those out there. So uh, I already talked about the part of the uh, state's program in which they use third party inspectors. Our uniform building. Uh, and trade code allows us to also exercise that option when we are in dire straits. So we are doing that now. Uh, obviously that has an increased cost to the industry. And so that is something to consider, um, regardless of what we do. Uh, in all of this. So. And and the reason, uh, so I bring this up under the option of sustaining our program is we do see that we would. Have to do something fairly drastic in order to retain our staffing. Our current, so this counts the two inspectors that are gone. Uh, incidentally, our third inspector is on an extended medical right now. So. We for over, for just over a month now have been without an inspector other than Chris. And um, will be in this situation at least until the end of January, uh, as it stands now. So the uh, the average salary of those three inspectors um, was twenty seven seventy an hour. And as you see there, the average, average salary for an elevator mechanic and. Because we don't really have good data on a specific privatized inspector. That's just the mechanic's average. Inspectors would have more qualifications and would generally. Make a minimum of that. Uh, as because they're going to be your more experienced mechanics and again have have quals. Now to uh, to add a little more fidelity to our MABCD salary, our inspectors start, starting wage is just a little over twenty one dollars an hour. And if they were to progress into a combo, uh, full combo inspector. Uh, category, they could reach with. Uh, category they could reach with tenure uh, up to forty dollars an hour. But again, that would be with multiple qualifications after a a good deal of tenure. And at that point, they would not simply be an elevator inspector. They would also have. Several other inspection capabilities that we would hope to be able to to utilize them for. Uh, now, uh, as we as we discuss, then of course, option two, and and I guess I should state that. So in our mind, we can, we, you know, we put this in kind of just two big bottom line options that we're looking at. Do we? Try to figure out a way to sustain our program or do we hand it back to the state? So obviously there's multiple uh. Potentially multiple options within sustaining our own program. If we hand it back to the state, it becomes relatively simple in that that's what we would do. Uh, we have made contact with them. We've been, as as stated, we've been in contact with them throughout. Uh, we have updated them on our current status and asked what it would look like if we got to that point. They were ready and willing. Actually, they started emailing us fairly early on, asking how long it would take to make a decision. Um, very, very willing to take the program and indicated very able to take the program. Uh, on uh, as it would stand, because again, though that's a lot of work for them. It it does also bring a lot of revenue to them. Um, it would then send our local business owners and contractors to register with them. There would be an increased cost. But as stated, we also see that there's some increased cost if we may, we're going to have to adjust fees if we maintain our program. I I don't know if we can find a way around that. So um, and and when we look at this too. We have not looked deeply into uh, other than some basic conversation to say. It, you know, if we ran a program similar to the states, would that make any sense? Um, to us, it doesn't make a lot of sense to say we would have a parallel program. Of doing private inspections while we try to recover or try to do something. And I don't know at this point if the state would consider that meeting or exceeding. Their program or if they would consider that duplicative. And not meeting their rules and regulations and state that at that point we needed to hand the program over. So that that's kind of an unknown that's still out there. Um, obviously, if we hand it to them right now, they have basically taken our code. Um, what they have not taken yet is our existing elevator code. So we don't know how that would look. Uh, we do have a program with some of our current elevator owners that are. Upgrading their the safety aspects of their elevators. We we would hope that the state would. Accept that as it stands now and enforce that through its through through its life cycle. Um, we expect that they would, of course, continue to work with us uh, as they implement codes. They they are still early in the process of having all of their codes on the books. So there's still a lot we could, we believe we could influence there. Uh, one interesting note uh, in that, when I speak of influence, is that uh, though two or three different times. Um, we thought that we had. Been given a, would be given a position on the statewide board that was established for elevator safety. Uh, the fire marshal was successful in having us removed from that board because we would not be part of the program. Uh, now, since that time, we have a new fire marshal. So a lot, a a lot of the um, dialogue and and the tone of that dialogue has begun to change since then as well. Uh, and the state is uh, uh, but anyway, yes, to to sum that up, we would have some unknowns. There are still several things we would have to work out with the state. Um, if if we go this route. Um, the state is estimating that there are ten thousand total conveyances in the state. We believe that estimate's a little high. I think they're north of nine thousand and somewhat, and they're they're rounding up by quite a bit. But nonetheless, quite a few out there, uh, one thousand six hundred and thirty four of those are ours. Fifty five, I believe it is of those are actually not in service currently, but we still monitor those and do an annual check to ensure that they have not been. Uh, inappropriately put back into to status. So with that, um, I know there's a lot there, but there's also. A lot more that could be. So uh, we certainly are. Happy to uh, to take questions. That you all would have at this point.
So if we transferred uh, all of this to the state, uh. What would that do to our local? Operators and so conveyances. For example, Goddard. When they built that new hotel, we were very responsive to help them get open. But would would they state still be as responsive as you have been uh, take care of our customers?
Yeah, and I think that goes two ways because. As robust as the private industry has become, I think they would be very responsive to inspections, to scheduling, etc. Now, that's a great question because in that particular case, we also had an occupancy. Uh, question, i.e. would we allow a level of temporary occupancy? And and I have no way to speak for how the state would look at that. We would still have an involvement in that because there would still be a building occupancy piece. So um, we we would still contact their elevator administrators. Uh, we would request the options. But it would give them a vote, uh, in whether a situation, you know, how a situation like that is handled and and that. Uh, again, is is right now that isn't unknown.
Well, my main concern is taking care of our citizens and our customers. And yeah, here. So to follow on with that. You say an elevator mechanic with sixty one dollars an hour and possibly an inspector would make much more than that. Do we recover the cost of that or do we eat the cost?
So at cur- currently, our current program um, does a really good job of basically cost recovery. But that's cost recovery of our folks at twenty seven seventy an hour and our vehicles, our equipment, etc. So the way the state's program is set up is the administrative is paid to the state. So the the registration of their conveyance, any permits. Uh, would go to them when the, when it's time for an inspection, they schedule through their elevator contractor. They would schedule that privately, so they would be able to shop, so to speak. Um, the market would set the the price. Uh, we know it would be more. Uh, we recently were questioned. So we had a private inspector do some of ours for us and charged a hundred ninety five dollars. I've also seen them charge three hundred dollars.
You cover that three hundred dollars or do we?
So so that would be paid directly to the um, directly to that private inspector. At this point, we would not, it would all be between the state and the private inspector. We would not see any of that. We would basically. We would disband our program and be revenue neutral, if you will.
Well, the county is mainly a service organization. And that's where I come from all the time is what kind of service are we providing to the community? So why couldn't we contract the then at sixty nine, seventy dollars an hour? Uh, to make sure that we keep the service that we need, or do you think the state would give us the same level of service and we've transferred it all over to it?
And and that's a great que- question, Commissioner. It it would be an option. I think my main question there would be back to if the state. If the state would consider that. Meeting or exceeding their standards. Um, if we did that, we we would still retain an administrative fee. Uh, we would have to determine what level of staffing was required to administrate the program in a similar fashion they do. But that would be an option. That would be an option on the on the table. My, uh, another thing we would have to look at is with charges. We would want to try to avoid um, duplicating a charge to someone that the state is going to charge them anyway. In that situation, uh, that would be mainly inspectors, contractors, etc. So it would probably limit our our ability to license.
One final question. We're not experts on everybody. So what's your recommendation?
Uh, our recommendation at this point, Commissioners, it would be best to go back to the state.
Just to clarify, you said the wage was twenty seven seventy an hour and that you said it's average. So what's the starting wage?
Uh, twenty twenty one seventeen.
Then in terms of this, the uh, private sector mechanic sixty one dollars an hour, and you said the inspector slash mechanic, the inspector might make a little bit more than that, you're saying. Um. Is this, is this the, is this one much they make? Make per hour or is this how much, is this billable? Is this the billable rate? Otherwise, if they wish to open a job, they're there for an hour, they might, they might have two hours. It's off, you know, not being billed, for example. So, again, we're talking about the billable hours here. Are we talking about?
Right, as as with any contract, I'm sure that the billable hours are higher than what the technician is being paid.
So our guys are getting paid by the hour, eight hours a day.
Correct.
Whatever it is, but.
And and our inspection, our our inspection and permit rates are based on that. Um, our basic inspection is is billed at a hundred dollars. Um, we have some, de- depending on what it is, we have some that would be more or less, especially for permits involved. Where, so a a couple interesting notes on that is this is one program that is very unique in our world. Because it's the only one that we do recurring inspections. Everything else in our world, we inspect to the point of occupancy and then we hand it over to the owner. And if there's any further annual inspection, it's handled by another agency, either the state uh, or the fire department, etc. So this is the only one that that we retain that. Uh, which which makes it an interesting. Interesting management piece in our world.
This may not be a fair question, but because I think it's too hard to answer that probably, but. We have lots of different kinds of elevators, large buildings, tall buildings, short buildings, all kinds of stuff. Is there some kind of a standard? You said a hundred dollars for an inspection. Is that for every building or is that? It's a kind of an average for all elevator immediate?
Well, and that.
It it's dependent on the type of equipment that we're inspecting, Commissioner, but sorry.
And and so Mr. Nordic is our chief elevator and electrical inspector.
Hi Commissioners, yeah, Chris Nordic for the record, M A B C D. Um. So generally, our our fee for hydraulic elevators is a hundred dollars per year. For the inspection. For a traction elevator, it's a hundred dollars per year. And then the fifth year, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. Every five years.
So there's a little bit. With that in mind, so imagine you're a business and you that went to the private inspector instead of that. Any guess what that would be? How's that change for that business?
I don't. Um, what we know right now is what Mr. Labor uh, pointed out was that we've had. One of our in former inspectors is charging a hundred and ninety five dollars per inspection. That's the only thing we know right now a- as far as cost goes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner.
No, and so you you said we're recovering, basically, there's no property tax subsidy to this at all. They're they're recovering enough fee fund to cover all the costs. Right? And um. Think that's actually all my questions.
And unfortunately, at the time that we started to see this and experience the loss of the inspectors, our program was at an all time high. As far as being caught up, being qualified, being staffed, etc. So. For what it's worth, uh, and this is a little bit anecdotal because it's just based on what we see. Elevator and mechanics and especially elevator inspectors can make a lot of money, but it comes with a lot of travel. And so that was what allowed programs like ours to be able to hire and retain. Is folks who were tired of traveling or didn't want to do the travel. So if you were an elevator inspector and lived in Wichita and your family did not want to leave Wichita, you spent a lot of days out of the year on the road. Now that there is a fairly, a much more robust industry in Kansas. You can make a good living as an elevator inspector in the private sector without, with still a lot of travel, but not as much distance between Nebraska, Kansas, Missouri, Oklahoma. You can.
I guess my final question would be the the state, the state board that you mentioned earlier, the makeup of that of that board, are these? All fire department centric members of these of these building, building, built, you know, builder representatives, I mean. The makeup of that board, I think, again, if they're defining what the state's policies or regulations are going to be. I'd like to know who sits on that board in terms of, are they? Because the state fire marshal, no offense to them, state fire marshal has been. Somewhat very myopic in in how they view things. They make things very good for their their perspective, but. They may not see someone say say things from other people's perspective. So this board really matters to.
And and my recollection is that that board was made up of some jurisdictions, which would probably be fire representatives, also some industry representatives. Um. Chris, do you have the breakdown there?
Yeah, actually, we have uh, one major elevator manufacturing company. This is in the the uh, House bill. One representative from an elevator servicing company. Uh, representative in architectural design and elevator consulting profession, one representative of a city or county in Kansas. A representative of a building owner or building manager. One rep of labor involved in the installation, maintain and repair of elevators and one representative from the general public.
So my my concern is, is that they, i- if they are. They're not representing, if you will, the. The builders side or the consumer side. That in a balanced fashion, that may be a problem. Because I I think the county would do that. And I'm not so, I'm I'm not so sure that the state would see it that way. So. That may be the the reason why I may I may not be wanting to this go to the state. Because I don't like trust them to to actually represent, if you will, the consumer side of this as well. So I think we would here.
And my comment, Chris, is that uh. You said the state is open to taking this over for us?
Yes, sir.
And you've had a vacancy since May that you can't fill, not even an application?
Correct.
And the the costs are passed to the owner of the elevator. And it's a hundred ninety dollars every few years. And I don't, and I own a building, I assume a hundred and ninety dollars is whatever it is. So I. Based on all the challenges you have and we have with employment and retention, and we're the only county in the whole state that does this.
Correct. We're we're the only ones that re- that retain the program. And and I to to Commissioner Howell's points, uh, those are all very valid and those are our our, we we share those concerns as well. Um, what I add to that is as we've tried, we, as we've tried to come up with ways to do that, what could we do that would not? Have a very adverse impact on Sedgwick County within our department, within HR in general, etc. If we did something to. Uh, to address our salaries, to be able to hire, etc. Uh, and then my biggest concern is us falling behind in the program while we try to do something like that. And then and and causing safety issues, uh, causing bigger issues for our community there. So. That that's kind of the tipping point for us is that. We we are starting to lose ground and. Um. We we do certainly do not want this to be an easy way out. Um, we're trying to do the right thing and look at all options, but if we do hand it to the state. We we're going to have to pass a cost on to our customers anyway. And if we hand this to the state, we see that as an option to not have the program go off the rails, if you will.
Good. Well, it's. Got a couple of opinions, Commissioner Beatty. Have a thought?
I have a lot of thoughts, but I. I bring only county doing it. I understand. I certainly understand Commissioner Howell's hesitation, but. I would rather lean into your recommendation. And Chris, if you would agree, I think the recommendations sound. Trying to trying to beef up this program to perform the service, I think, is be more of a challenge and.
Uh, and and we, and in particular, Mr. Nordic. Have put a lot into this program because it has always been one of our more difficult to manage. So it is. Is not without reservation, is is not an easy decision for us to make. Um, and again, I I'm probably way deeper into decisions uh, in that level of discussion than than we intended to go today. Um, so so. We we are certainly certainly uh, open to any ideas. We certainly want to follow the will of the people, the will of the of the governing body with what we do. Um, so. Okay, well.
Final question. If if we go down this path and hand it to the state, when we find out it's turns out to be. Overly regulated in a way we don't like it, can we always go backwards?
We we could, yes, sir.
Well, generally speaking, I like things in the private sector. If possible. So I'm I'm tempted to support the idea there, but I also see another solution is. If we paid our people better. We don't have a problem. So I I, again, as long as this is fee funded and we're recovering the fees, I don't care what the salary is as much. I think it still may be a service to people. If we adjust those salaries up where we can fill these positions. It still may be in the best interest of of our consumers to have us to continue doing this. So I don't, I think it's a solvable problem. So I see two, I I'm I'm torn between us basically increasing the salaries to fill these positions. And actually probably benefit our our consumers. With maybe controlled regulation and maybe still lower costs. And maybe better service. I see those are all benefits. The other flip side of that is private sector. I I would like to see things in the private sector, but I don't trust them. I hate to say that in this case, but thank you, Chairman.
Okay. So do you need to uh, you need need this to be on an agenda item as a formal vote or?
In Chris's world, he's, there's three key partners, county, city, and then the consumer out there. And I don't know if you've done work with our. Commercial people who, this is not a wobbly issue, it's not a residential issue, it's a commercial issue. If there, if you're getting any feedback from that side of the coin, and I'm not sure where you're at with the city, so.
And and we have, yes. So that is, um, since we do not have a a robust commercial industry board. Uh, at this point in time, that is a a little tricky, but Mr. Nordic has been. Uh, specifically, he has met with the elevator contractors who are. specifically, he's met with the elevator contractors who are involved, has been doing what he can to seek feedback. And, and again, so, you know, we can, we can look at, certainly happy to look at all options. If we did look at trying to sustain our program, we would, we would probably be looking at some form of hybrid to at least in the short term, how private industry support this so that we do not get so far behind that we can't recover. But basically because that we, we do, Chris reminded me of the numbers last night, I believe a hundred and twenty two inspections a month is our average in that section. So, so it's, it is like with anything in, in our world, we, we fall quickly behind. We, last year we did a hundred and one thousand inspections in the building and trade side. So if we miss a month, we're, we're way behind.
Any idea where the council's at on four fifty five?
And, and that I don't have, sir. At this point, we've initiated that conversation with the city now some months ago. When this first came up and first was discussed at the manager's office level, they actually questioned why we initially even maintained the program and indicated that, that they would support a move to, to the fire marshal. But I have, I have not received feedback to recent inquiries.
Because at the end of the day, if we move that direction, the governing bodies have.
Right. And, and I cannot, I cannot speak to, to what the council. But all I know that the council knows is that in an update I provided for our yearly topics, this was included as one of our hottest topics for them, that there would be, a decision would have to be made on this early in twenty four.
Okay. We'll keep you aware, Commission, on, but I do think this is, this has to have a relatively fast solve after the first of the year. We have to make a decision in first quarter of twenty twenty four on how we want to move better. Otherwise, we get behind on inspections and then you have a safety issue.
Safety issue and I would assume liability issue.
But we would. You're behind on inspections.
Right.
That'll come.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Chris, thanks for your job and thank you for being here. Okay. Anything else before? Mr. Arnold, do you have anything for us? Okay, you're okay. Okay, thank you. We'll see everybody tomorrow.